Standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one, acceptance of meeting minutes. Discussion and possible action and vote with regard to the acceptance of meeting minutes from the meetings of October first, two thousand nineteen, to be accepted and approved by the town council. Do I have a motion to accept? Motion's been made by Councilman Di Lorenzo. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Ferragetti. Any questions? There be none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Proposed ordinances. Notice was given of a public hearing on this day whereby the town council would consider the passage of the following proposed ordinances. Item number two, ordinance nineteen dash zero one four, an ordinance amending chapter nineteen, article ten, section nineteen dash forty-seven A of the Code of Ordinance of the Town of North Providence entitled Three Way Stop Signs to Provide For A Stop Sign At The Intersection Of Orlando Drive And Long Meadow Drive. Do I have a motion to pass ordinance nineteen dash zero one four? Motion's been made by Councilman Ferragetti. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Amerigi. Any questions? There be none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number three, liquor license. Notice was given of a public hearing to be held on this date in the Providence Journal on October eighteenth and twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen for a new BV liquor license for Howie's Restaurant LLC, DBA Howie's, fifteen twenty-five Smith Street, North Providence, Rhode Island. Do we have anyone here from Howie's? Just please state your name for the record. Thank you. Does anybody have any questions to this gentleman?
What's uh, well, so what are your operation, what are your hours of operation right now?
Hours of operations?
Right, right now, yeah.
From eight to two o'clock and from eight to four o'clock on Wednesdays, Wednesdays eight to, I'm sorry, eight to two o'clock and then eight to four o'clock Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday.
Okay.
And?
That's morning, afternoon, right, AM?
That is, that is morning, yes.
And, and if you were to get the liquor license, will your hours be changing?
No, they are staying the same. We're basically only having mimosas, Bloody Marys, beer and wine.
Gotcha. Okay.
Any further questions? Yes? You have to come up to the microphone. Just state your name for the record, please. Wait, can you just say your name again? I can't.
Sorry, Dawn Kavanaugh.
Okay.
And so, um, even though they just said that they're only gonna be open until four o'clock, I just wanna ask what kind of a liquor license are we talking about? Is it a license that if they wanted to extend the hours, that there wouldn't be any notification on that? Do you know what I mean? Like there's an eleven, there are eleven o'clock liquor licenses and then there are one o'clock liquor licenses. And even though we just stated they're only intending to be open until four o'clock right now, right, four o'clock? If they extend their hours, what kind of hours would the liquor license be extended up to?
Well, in, in North Providence, we only have, well, the BV license that he would, he is applying for, he could use all day and all night if he wanted to.
And until what time?
One, one o'clock.
So it's a one o'clock license?
Yes.
And the other question is, um, previously in that class, there was an entertainment license in that building? I don't know what happened to it, but do we know if there's like an entertainment license associated with that location?
He doesn't, he doesn't have an entertainment license.
Okay.
Yeah.
Those are the only questions.
Thank you very much. Okay, any other questions? Do I have a motion to approve? Motion's been made by Councilman Di Lorenzo. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Amerigi? Just come up to the microphone, please. Just state your name for the record.
My name is Anthony Fasatelli. I live right behind the proposed license place, you're gonna need, you wanna let, cover them a license. We had that problem before. We issue a license, they're gonna have a band in there eventually and nobody's gonna be able to sleep.
No, no, this is a liquor license, not, not an entertainment license.
That, that happened last time. Did the same thing last time. If you, if you recall, it's a few years back. Issue a liquor license, they get, then they eventually get a band in there.
Well, he would have to, he would have to apply. He would have to apply for an entertainment license.
Until two o'clock in the morning and the drugs outside. I live directly behind the building.
He would have to apply for, for an entertainment license. This is just for a liquor license.
Yeah, but I understand, but that, that's the start of it.
Okay. But he's not applying for an entertainment license, so he, he can't have a band in there or anything.
I would have sold the house. The worst people I've ever tried.
Okay. You're, yes.
Have you been to our establishment at, at the restaurant?
What's that?
Have you been to Howie's Restaurant?
No, but I lived, I'm the, I'm the house right behind.
Come on over to our establishment, see what we have there. You couldn't set up a band in there if you wanted.
Everybody says that in the beginning. It doesn't work that way.
You can take out a couple tables and set up a band.
It doesn't work that way. Sorry. I've been around too long.
And I understand, sir. I do understand. I know exactly what you're talking about.
As it is, I don't want to sleep. And I, band glasses eventually. I, I don't even wanna hear it.
Okay. Thank you ver-
That's my, that's my opinion.
Thank you.
My name is Paul Neri. I own three houses in North Providence. And Anthony Fasatelli's lived here literally, he's, he's eighty? Thirty-five, forty years. I mean, if this is, if he's objecting to this license because it's a history that from this license, then you end up getting a ban. Eighty-year-old individuals should be respected in terms of his ability to sleep.
Absolutely.
If not, the house is gonna go up the sale and I'm gonna be a hundred percent.
Right, but,
The worst people I've ever tried.
But the license that he is applying for right now,
He does a bad thing. He's not, he's not a good man.
I, I understand, but the license he is applying for is, he cannot have a band with that license.
I'm not a builder. I understand exactly.
All right, I just wanna make that clear because, the councilman, go ahead.
Yes. Uh, it, may, may I make a suggestion? I know this has already been, uh, this motion's been made and it's been seconded. But, uh, maybe what we could do is, could we condition the license to, um, an eight o'clock hours of operation? And, and I'm not saying that he wouldn't be able to go till later if at some point his business plan changed. But if, if he did wanna go till later than that, he would just have to come in and notify and we would have to, we could have another hearing. I don't know. It sounds like that wouldn't be a problem for, for this licensee. And, and I think that may, may, I think that may make the neighbors a little bit more comfortable.
Okay, so you wanna put that in the form of a motion?
Well, I guess I would ask that the, the mover and the seconder to, um,
amend that motion?
amend that motion, yeah.
Okay. Okay, motion, Councilman Di Lorenzo's gonna amend, amend his motion to add the eight o'clock time to it. And do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Ferragetti. Is there any questions? There be none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
So, so just to be clear, what, what, what I, what I propose and what my council, what my council colleagues have graciously accepted is that he, he would not be able to open past eight PM at night, every night of the week. If he wanted to open later than that, uh, he would have to come back before the council.
I'll, I'll do what I said I'm gonna do. That's the case. You need your lighters to sit.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you and good luck. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, item number four, liquor license. Item number four, liquor license. Notice was given of a public hearing to be held on this date in the Providence Journal on October eighteenth and twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen for a new BV liquor license for SR Management Group LLC, DBA, Senedale Revival Co., nineteen eighty-five Smith Street, North Providence, Rhode Island. We are going to continue this matter. Um, do I have a motion to continue? Motion's been made by Councilman Juicy. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman McColl. Any questions? There be, and I know the gentleman is here. You wanna speak?
Yeah, Shane Pichay. Uh, just would request that that would be a, uh, move to a special meeting as soon as possible, given the circumstances of what happened.
Yep, actually, I think we discussed it. We're gonna schedule that for, uh, Monday, two weeks from now. And we'll figure out what we discussed earlier.
Very good.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for coming out. Sure. Just state your name for the record.
Anthony Costanzo.
He's on the agenda, isn't he?
Twenty, 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 twenty-six.
You're, you're actually on the agenda, sir.
This is on this, um,
Okay, okay.
situation. Um, I'd like to address the council that, um, the license that is in question to be, um, opened is, uh, a problem for parking. And there is absolutely zero parking at that facility to, um, put any cars there. I don't know what the occupation, occupancy level's gonna be for it, but there is zero parking. Three, three spaces in the front and that's it. And, um, the abutters around it are all concerned about, um, trespassing on their parking. Mine, um, Jeff over at the funeral parlor, and also Steve, um, in the accounting office. And we've had a conversation about it. And, uh, we are definitely concerned about whether or not we would have a continuous trespassing problem. So.
Okay.
Would you like to be invited to that meeting if there's gonna be another?
Well, there's gonna be a public notice, yes. Okay, thank you.
Just take that into consideration.
I will.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item number five, victualling license. Town council to consider approval of a victualling license for SR Management Group LLC, DBA, Senedale Revival Company, nineteen eighty-five Smith Street, North Providence. Do I have a motion to continue this? Motion's been made by Councilman Di Lorenzo. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Ferragetti. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. And item number six, entertainment license. Town council to consider approval of an entertainment license for SR Management Group LLC, DBA, Senedale Revival Company, nineteen eighty-five Smith Street, North Providence. Do I have a motion to continue? Motion's been made by Councilman Juicy. Is there a second? Second by Councilman Matone. Any questions? There be none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number seven, victualling license. Town council to consider approval of a victualling license for Jorge M. Cruz, DBA La Casa Del Saboa, twenty fifty-three Smith Street, North Providence, Rhode Island. This item was continued from the October meeting. Just please state your name for the record. Come to the mic. Yeah, just come up to the microphone.
So, Ailee Santiago.
Okay, and his name?
Jorge Cruz.
Okay. Anyone, everyone has the information in front of them. Is there any questions? There be none. Do I have a motion to grant the victualling license? Motion's been made by Councilman Matone. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Di Lorenzo. Any further questions? There be none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Good luck. Thank you. Item number eight, snow removal of the sidewalks of Senedale. Anthony Costanzo the third would like to address the council concerning the snow removal on the sidewalks of Senedale. This item was continued from the October meeting. Mr. Costanzo.
First of all, on that matter, I'd like to apologize for not being here at the last meeting. Um, it was a little mess up on the date. But as you all know, I've been, um, running the business across the way over here, um, for twenty-five years. My parents ran it before me for thirty. Um, this business and Senedale have been good to us over the years. But one thing I've noticed as, uh, as I start to age, um, I realize that, um, the town, not the town, the state, is actually putting all the snow on the sidewalks. They make no effort whatsoever to keep it off the sidewalks. And, um, we only have six and a half to seven feet of sidewalk in front of the building. So if you get three or four inches of snow, it's not too bad. But when you get six or eight inches of snow in the street, um, and they push that all onto the sidewalk, it's left up to yours truly and others in Senedale to, uh, remove that snow to make it safer passage. And you all know in years past, you've all had to walk through the sidewalks when people don't do it. And I do, always. And, um, I just think that something needs to be done about it. And in years past, about fifteen or twenty years ago, there was, um, some snow removal, um, the whole length on this side of the road. And I, I don't know if that was done voluntarily by someone in the town or if it was contracted or what. I just wanna make it, um, make you aware of that and that it's an issue. And, um, if you're going to, um, require us to remove the snow, I think you should be a little more aggressive with the people who don't remove the snow. And then you might have a lot more people in here 'cause it's this high sometimes, you know? It's getting a little bit crazy.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions?
This is Costanza. You said the, the state, uh, is doing this?
Yeah, well, the trucks are, are state trucks. It's a state highway. State highways. So they just literally push it all in. Sometimes it's so aggressive with the plows, it breaks the glass on the windows. That's how bad it is. So.
I, I, I'd, uh, I'd suggest maybe we could ask the, uh, mayor to reach out to the, uh, State Department of Transportation, maybe?
Yeah.
And just see if we can set a meeting down just to, see if there's a, a reasonable solution or, or some mitig- mitigation that can happen.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman Matone. Second by Councilman Di Lorenzo. Is there any questions? There be none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
You can stay right there. You're up again.
What's that?
You're up again.
I'm up again?
Number nine, the amount of liquor licenses in North Providence. Anthony Costanzo the third would like to address the council concerning the number of liquor licenses remaining open in the town. This item was continued from the October meeting.
Again, I apologize for not being here last week, last month. Um, I'm getting my money's worth. I haven't been doing this for twenty-five years. And I, I feel I should get myself more involved, I guess, in past and future. Um, I just, you've read the letter. I don't know if you've read the letter I, I, I sent to the, to the town. Um, I just think we're going down a really scary, steep road here. Um, don't know if you're aware of it or not, but beer is being sold at two dollars, um, per serving, um, in some locations in the town. Um, whereas you can buy a soda for two dollars, but if you're buying a sixteen-ounce beer for two dollars, um, it's just getting out of control. It was three dollars at a bar. Everything was three dollars at a local bar. So this other restaurant, uh, bar decided they would go to two dollars. Um, so I just feel that, um, in the long run, the town is not making out by adding all these additional licenses. Um, and in the, the very long run, I know this is a somber thing to say, but I think someone, you're gonna hear that somebody is gonna be killed with all this excessive drinking, okay? It is a controlled substance, but at the pricing that it's at, it's not controlled anymore. And it's also hurting the longstanding businesses that have been in the town for a very long time, some of which don't have the, you know, what's to get up here and actually talk about it. They'll just say, oh, well, you know, don't worry about it. Uh, let the town worry about it. Um, but that's not the case. So I just feel that we have too many licenses in the town and that's it. That's my opinion. There are a lot of reasons. Parking and there's just a, abundance of reasons. You, I hear, I hear it. I don't actually come to the meetings, but I do get the scuttlebutt in the billiard club after the meeting because a lot of people go there after the meeting and they hash out their, their issues and sometimes it can get loud. So I just feel there are a lot of people who live in this town that are, uh, being hurt by the excessive amount of licenses, recent ones especially, so.
Councilman Juicy has a question?
Yeah, I've been here sixteen years and we've always had thirty-three licenses.
Sixteen?
Yep. And we've always had the thirty-three licenses.
I believe at one point in time it was increased.
It was before me, it was.
That's very possible. I've been doing this for twenty-five years, so.
Yeah.
We went up, but the only time we increased it, we took a couple from the D and we added them to the B. We didn't increase the num, total number in the town. What we did was we lowered one, um, class and we added it to the BV, uh, BV. But that was quite a while ago.
Yeah, I'm aware of that. Um, what, what I'm saying is not so much that the number, it's they, I don't think there's been a point when they've all been taken.
Yes.
Have they? Recently? All of the licenses?
Not recently, but yes.
Right, and I'm just, I'm remarking now that, um, maybe it's just that it seems like there's too many licenses within a couple of, I don't know, maybe a quarter of a mile from me, you know? It just seems like there's a lot of licenses. So I don't know. Maybe they were all just moved to a different part of the town. I'm not sure.
Well, when you get a, when you get a business district such as Senedale, you're gonna get competition. You're gonna have, you're gonna have different businesses coming in, restaurants and, and everything like that. So, I mean, you're, you're in a, you're in a business zone, let's say. So you gotta expect that. I mean, you, you can't, uh, you cannot start limiting who gets a license and who doesn't because they're too close to somebody else. You can't, just can't do that. I mean, it's, it's competition. It's competition. It's, uh,
I wholeheartedly understand. I just think there are a lot of issues that are not taken into consideration, especially at some other, um, licenses that don't really affect me as, as much as some in the future might, okay?
No, no, you're, now you're talking about the two dollar and three dollar beers, right?
Exactly.
That's really not this body's problem. When, once we give out the license and that starts happening and there's problems at the places, right? Then if the complaints get bad enough, then it comes back before this body. But for the most part, that falls on the police department.
I agree.
And they, and they, and they'll go in and, and do something about it. And they've done it already a few times in the last few years in a few places. So it's, it's not something that isn't being monitored or isn't being taken care of. It's definitely, it's definitely monitored. It's definitely taken care of.
In most cases, you're correct. I do agree with you. I just think this body, it starts here and.
Well, we issue the license, but we, well, we, we don't, I mean, we can't give a license because there's no rules regulating how much they can charge for the liquor.
I agree.
There, there's no rule saying that you can't get eighteen dollars or three dollars.
There, there are with the state of Rhode Island.
Huh?
There are with the state of Rhode Island. There's minimum pricing and there's also timing and licensing.
I, I never heard that. I'll be honest with you. I never heard of a minimum pricing.
It's with the, uh, liquor control board.
I never heard that.
What, what would that, if you don't mind, what's, what, what is that amount?
What does that amount to exactly?
Yeah, you just said it's a minimum price of a dollar, fifty cents.
I don't know the exact prices, but it goes as far as to say that during certain periods of time, you cannot charge certain prices. For example, I can't have a happy hour. It's against the law. In the state of Rhode Island, you're not allowed to have a happy hour, but yet people do get away with it. There's nothing, I, I'm not gonna do it because it's against the law, okay? You also can't say that, for example, there's a, there's a local business that's selling a, a beer for two dollars on a Sunday, I believe. That's also against the law in the state of Rhode Island. But, I mean, I, I'm not the law, okay? And there's reasons for it. The reason is excessive consumption. The same reason why a BV license is in, um, has to be inclusive with food, okay? No food, no BV license. Um, just one of the reasons why someone like Troy has to make sure we have all of our, our food certifications in place so that we can serve food.
Okay, just, just really quick. We have five Class A licenses in town, which are all issued. We have thirty-one issued BV licenses. We have one BT, which is a tavern license, zero issued. We have a BVL. We have ten of those and three are issued right now. We have a Class D full, club full liquor license. Fourteen of those, nine are issued. We have a Class D limited liquor license, one of those, one, which is issued. Class M, there's one, zero issued. And this ordinance was passed in November of two thousand three. So that was the last time the number of licenses were addressed in the town.
I, I totally agree with that. I've seen that. So I just wanted to state my opinion here. And, um, maybe it isn't worth anything, but I just hope none of you have to actually deal with the outcome that will, at the most negative point, you know? So, um, it is a police matter in most cases, but I, I think we're going down a very steep and slippery road right now. I, for one, will be forced to allow my business to compete at the same level. I'm not happy about it, but it has to be done. So, um, these are problems and they start, they start here.
Councilman?
Yeah, a couple things. Uh, one, uh, I'm, I'm glad Mr. Costanzo brought this up because when we, when we were, I was looking at the liquor license and entertainment license, and frankly, more the entertainment licenses, I was surprised with the amount that there were, uh, and kind of where they're located in the town. Uh, what I'd like to do is for, for next meeting, and I'll, I'll just convey this to the clerk, is I, I would actually like for the council to take a look at, uh, the entertainment licenses and the liquor licenses, see where they're located in the town. Uh, one thing that I'm, I was a little bit surprised by is that, is the amount of entertainment licenses that are directly abutting residential. And I know in, in North Providence, uh, almost all the commercial corridors directly abut residential, but, um, those can have a big impact on, on neighborhoods and those can have a big impact on neighbors. Uh, the, the other thing that, um, I, I think is, is, is important here is that, um, the number of liquor licenses, it, it has been set. It is, it is what it is. What I, what I do think is, is unfair is allowing businesses in the town to operate, um, uh, either by skirting the rules or, or flagrantly, or, or just not adhering to the rules. So, uh, what I would request, and, and Mr. Costanzo was right, uh, the, the way the law is written at, at this point is you can have two menus, one for during the week and one on the weekend, but they have to be consistent. They have to be consistent across the board. So you can have a Monday through Friday menu and you have one set of prices and you can have a weekend menu and have another set of prices. What you cannot do is you cannot have a happy hour. You cannot have drink specials on certain days. Well, you can't have drink specials at all. And so what I would request is that maybe we send a letter to the police department just asking them to take a look, uh, at some of the businesses, uh, or all the businesses, frankly, and just make sure they're adhering to the laws as they're written on the books.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman Matone. Is there a second? Second by Councilman Di Lorenzo. Any questions? There be none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you. Okay, item number ten, no through trucking, no through traffic, no through trucking. Ron Valenti would like to address the town council to request a no through traffic and/or no through trucking sign at the intersection of Allison and Dolly Avenues. Mr. Valenti, state your name.
Good evening, Ron Valenti. Good evening, former neighbor.
Thank you.
I've been a resident of Maple Crest Avenue in North Providence for thirty-two years. Uh, my children grew up on that street, went to public schools and a high school. Uh, I've seen all our neighbors with our, with their children grow up and move on. Over the years, I've not experienced, which I have experienced in the last year, probably because I'm retired now and I spend a lot of time outside, especially in the summer. There are seven homes between the intersections of Dolly Avenue and Maple Crest Avenue until you get to Pellum Parkway at the corner. Three of us are, are retired, so you've got probably four other homes there. When you're outside, or in my case, they gotta screen the import, so I, I can hear the cars coming or the trucks coming down the street. When you've got four people and if you're going, if someone is coming and approaching their, their yard, they're usually coming down the street at a normal rate of speed. In this instance, we have a situation where, again, I'm experiencing it in the summertime after four PM. Usually that's when businesses or people are getting out of work. We have a problem where traffic coming down Fruit Hill Avenue approaching Smith Street. At the last second, you can see the red light or green light at the intersection of Fruit Hill and Smith Street. Immediately, they make that left. That left takes you onto Allison-Dolly intersection over to Maple Crest. And you can tell by the speed of the vehicle. It's vehicles and it's sometimes utility trucks. I've seen truck, the trailer trucks go. After four o'clock at night, five o'clock in the evening, you know what they're doing. They're avoiding that light. I've got a couple of pictures on my phone. Couldn't stay out there all evening snapping pictures of cars that are going by. If someone's gonna pull over and knock the hell out of me. But I got a couple of shots. I got a U-Haul truck. They're avoiding that light and they're either taking the, the, the right onto Pellum or they continue to go straight like this truck here, taking the right on lookout. My other concern is safety. Other families are now moving into this neighborhood, young children. Next to me on thirty Maple Crest Avenue is a family with three boys, ranging from the ages of three to seven. I've seen them playing and running around in the driveway. Occasionally, I would go over if the parents are not there and tell them, stay in the driveway. Don't get near the street. I got a four-year-old grandson. Last summer, when my son-in-law was home, they were outside playing. And he said, I won't use the words, so you wouldn't believe what just came down speeding down Maple Crest Avenue, exactly what they were doing, avoiding that light. I'm asking for some, no- I'm asking for some no through way, I know you can't avoid cars coming by there, but like I said, I've seen utility trucks. But you can tell, or I can tell, in the evening, when a car is coming down Maple Crest Avenue that doesn't belong on Maple Crest, maybe doesn't even belong on Pelham Parkway, one of these utility vehicles, I went to the corner of Pelham and Maple Crest, and I watched that vehicle go all the way down Pelham to get to Smith Street and make that way, just to avoid that way. This has been going on for a couple of years, at least that I'm aware of, because I'm retired, I ain't got more time outside, and it's been bothering the hell out of me. Two of my neighbors are aware of it, they were gonna join me tonight, one is out, out of town, one is working late, they were gonna join me. But, uh, this is a serious problem with speed and with safety with little children, like I said, right next door to me. And I wouldn't let my four-year-old grandson in my driveway, um, during those particular hours.
You're, you're a hundred percent correct, and as you know, we used to, our backyards used to butt each other and, you know, I, sometimes I'd get nervous walking my dog at night because people would fly down that street.
You can't walk, you can't cross the street at night.
You can, Councilman.
Yeah, what, what, around what times does this happen?
I, because it, the summertime, I can, you look at my watch on my phone, it's, once it's after four o'clock at night, that's when there's more activity, so you can have traffic coming down Fruit Hill.
Is that all true right now? Is that all true right now?
Yes, but being that it's now, we're, we're beginning the season, we're indoors more, windows are closed, I'm not hearing it, but when I'm outside, I can go outside any evening at five, six o'clock, four o'clock, and I can stand there, I'm kind of, these five or six vehicles cutting through that don't belong on Maple Crest Avenue.
Yeah, it would, it would go on online, because I used to walk my dogs at night.
Maybe we can have, um, send a letter to the police department, have a D-run in that area at that time.
Yep.
And, and, uh, we can set, set maybe a...
But what about the trucks?
Councilman Di Lorenzo, you have a question too?
Well, he just said exactly what you're gonna say, Mr. Valanti, that a police presence would help you. Uh, Councilman Giusti just mentioned it, so, yes, I think we should be in touch with the police department to get some police presence there, see if we can stop it a little bit.
Is there no through, is there no through trucking now, like there, if a truck does go through, or can trucks go through? I don't think there's any no through trucking.
There are no signs.
There's no signs to say no through trucking.
And there's a stop sign in the intersection of Pelham Parkway and, uh, Maple Crest Avenue.
We can, we can make a motion to, uh, have the, uh, Ordinance Committee. Ordinance Committee, uh, check out about putting a no through trucking sign up there.
The trucking signs would help, I've seen, um, landscaping trucks. Now, I was talking to Richard Foss and he says, well, maybe they're going on a job, I says, no. It's five o'clock in the afternoon, they're done for the day, they don't wanna get that light, they don't wanna go back down the hill, they cut across.
Yeah, maybe...
The one that done me was a, was a tractor trailer truck. And like I said, I got pictures of the U-Haul truck.
I wanna make two motions. First motion's gonna be to, uh, write a letter to the police department and have them do a D-run from four o'clock on your saying? All right, and then the second motion is...
Well, let's take a, the, the first motion's been made by Councilman Giusti, is there a second? Second by Councilman Di Lorenzo, any questions? There be none, all's in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it.
My second motion is to send to the ordinance committee, uh, to have them look at putting no through trucking sign in that area.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilman Giusti, is there a second? Second by Councilman Famigetti, any questions? There be none, all's in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. We'll let you know when the, uh, ordinance meeting is, but we'll, we'll take care of it, thank you. Okay, item number eleven, no parking sign on Third Street. Ralph Jomani requests to appear before the council regarding a no parking sign across from Seventeen Third Street. Mr. Jomani.
Ralph Michael Jomani.
Thank you.
How you doing, guys?
Good, good.
How you doing? It's been a long time. We got tonight, it ain't good, you know?
I think we're passing your issue, your item tonight.
Thank you for taking care of my concern and, um, very happy for that.
No problem, thank you for coming out.
For making the street safe and et cetera, et cetera.
Thank you.
Bonne nuit. Know what that means, right?
Of course, of course, thank you, Mr. Jomani. Item number twelve, intersection of Smithville Road and Middlespring Avenue. Councilman Bacala requests discussion and possible vote on contacting the State Traffic Commission concerning the intersection of Smithville Road and Middlespring Avenue in an easterly direction. Councilman Bacala.
Thank you, Council President, uh, after what District Two did in, on Chal Street, I got about six phone calls, and if anyone is in the audience or any one of us has gone up Middlespring Avenue, especially at a certain time when it's congested, that left turn onto Smithville Road, if cars are coming, uh, on the other side, you can't see the cars coming up over the hill when you go to take a left-hand turn. So, I wanted to send it to the state to see if, you know, what they come back with for either a left turn only or just something, or something with a delay, but after getting at least six phone calls from constituents, it's a problem.
Okay, motion's been made by Councilman Bacala to send this matter to the State Traffic Commission, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Famigetti, any questions?
Shane Fiche, you're talking about the left onto Smithville Road?
Yeah, from BP and...
I, I don't know if you remember, but I would have to say it was about five or six years ago, the state came in, changed that to a left-hand turn only, within about thirty days, they turned it back. So I'm sure when you look into it, you'll, you'll see.
Anybody know why?
It's a point of contention, because it, it actually made the traffic worse with the left-hand only at the time. And I only remember that because it was a, a point at that time, so they should have some information on it, and I know they've done a study on it that you can see there, but it, I agree that it...
I do have a seventeen-year-old son, and the reason why this actually came up too, he was delivering pizzas for Santoros, and he came home one night and said, Dad, this is before as a councilman, you gotta do something about that.
Yeah.
Can't see anybody coming up, you know, I almost got hit by something, so, you know.
It's definitely worth a second.
They'll have information on that, I just remember from a few days ago.
Yeah.
Okay, a motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No, I was just gonna say Shane's right, I mean, the same ish, the same thing happened at Charles and Middlespring. The state, based upon new information, changed their decision two years later, so it's entirely possible we'll do the same here.
We've got new businesses, we have probably more congestion, so I'm assuming it's, you know...
Okay, item number thirteen, speeding issues. Councilman Famigetti requests discussion and possible vote on speeding issues on Ivan Street. Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. President, this is Ivan Street, right across the street or on the street of, of Casey Field. It's brought to my attention that unfortunately, people speed up and down that street. The speed limit's twenty-five miles per hour, now it's being requested to reduce it to fifteen miles per hour. Um, given that, I'd like to make a motion to refer this to the ordinance committee for, uh, any recommended changes.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman Famigetti, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Emery, any questions? There be none, all's in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number fourteen, traffic issues. Councilman Famigetti requests discussion and possible vote on traffic issues on Garfield Street and Lojai Boulevard. Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. President, this stems off of the Franklin Street issues that we've been dealing with the last couple of months. Uh, as we can see, later on in the agenda, there is a proposed ordinance to reverse Franklin Street back to two-way traffic, which will hopefully address the traffic concerns in that neighborhood now. Um, however, there always can be things that are done. I grew up in, uh, the Gillen Platte, which is adjacent to this area. I know exactly what the traffic issue is like over here with Garfield and Lojai Boulevard, with people coming around the corner. I know exactly where the people are that have children playing in the yard. So I do think that we should look into this area to see if there's anything else that we can do to lower the speed, um, of traffic in that area to, you know, hopefully protect the, the young residents in the community. Um, I know there are a few people here tonight who might like to chime in, we talked at length earlier, um, but I do have a motion after that.
Would anybody like to speak on this matter?
Good evening, my name is Paul Decort, I've lived on Garfield Street for twenty-five years. I started out at forty, which is where you guys are presently going to make it one-sided parking, which I commend because you couldn't get a fire truck to save my house to get through there. So presently, I live at eighty-eight, which is up the other end, and you guys have now put up a stop sign at Franklin and Garfield. So, I'm assuming you did this to stem the flow of traffic for speeders, that was my assumption. Uh, there hasn't ever been a stop sign there. My question is this, and I have a couple, actually. Um, years ago, there was supposed to have been a stop sign study done. Uh, Mr. Giusti, who's probably one of, a couple of you that were on the council at the time, I was wondering whatever happened at that. Seems like the town of North Providence is throwing up stop signs, we're going stop signs crazy, to either stop the flow of traffic or whatever, I don't, I don't know.
Councilman, you, you go ahead.
The police, the police took that over, and we've gone through three or four chiefs since then. So, it's probably lost in the, in the west.
Technically, it's, it's in limbo.
Yeah, it's probably lost. It wouldn't be bad to remind them about doing a study on that, because there are a lot of stop signs, you know, that were put up, and I don't want to...
Now we're putting up with, uh, dead-end streets?
No, they put stop signs up, like, um, they would just call up DPW and say, throw a stop sign at the corner of...
The main issue was a stop sign with no law backing them. Obviously, that has been remedied now, everything that we've done so far is backed by an ordinance.
No, there's still a lot of them.
Well, no, what I'm saying is this council, everything that's done is backed by...
They were just throwing stop signs up, so, again, you put a stop sign up on Franklin and Garfield, I don't have a problem with that. There's still people non-stopping, it doesn't matter. I was emailing Mr. Famiglietti and Mr. Emery, I was sitting in my car, letting my daughter move out of the vehicle, because she had to get out, and I just sat there and watched people blow through the stop sign. Forty miles an hour up the street, it's normal, this, it's just the way it is on Garfield Street. So, my other question is, is what are we gonna do about it? I get it, we're taking Franklin back to a two-way, perfect, that's fantastic, that helps us with this, with this traffic, but what are we gonna do? I've asked before, I've been in front of the town council a few times, and I've always asked for speed bumps. Everybody seems to be afraid of them, nobody likes them, nobody wants them. Uh, the, the plows over them, I, I work for the post office, if you go down, uh, towards a post office, there's been speed bumps there forever. We've got eleven-ton trucks going over them, plows hitting them, they don't go anywhere. That is one way to stem the flow of traffic, and it needs to be done, and I get it. So if we're gonna do stop signs, I want one on Ward and Garfield, I want one on Lojai and Ca- and Campbell, and let's not forget Adams, like, we can have them every thirty feet. People speed up to get to the stop signs, they're just blowing through them, they're not really making a difference. And I hate saying that, because I wish people would just do what's right and stop.
I hate to say this, but stop signs don't slow people down.
No, it makes them speed up.
And they just don't slow it, they, they put them up for traffic control, and it's not a traffic control, it really isn't.
And it's not supposed to be used, there's four reasons for it, I have them in my pocket, I could read them to you, I could bore you to death with it. But it, it's not right to just keep throwing them, and I don't wanna see that. I would love to have a couple of speed bumps put on Garfield Street, you can put it in front of my house. You need help paying for it, I'll pay for part of it, I don't care, put the sign in my yard, I have no problem with that. I'm just trying to figure out a way, because you know how the flow goes? You got people that move in with kids, and then you got people that move out or the kids grow older? But right now in my neighborhood, there are more kids than I've ever seen. When my daughters grew up here, they're thirty and twenty-three, no lie, I used to roll a ball in the middle of the road to slow cars down. I could see them coming, they knew the ball was coming out, and it wasn't like I was trying to cause an accident, but that was my way of getting people to slow down. Two fights I lost getting there, and I've lived there for that long, twenty-three years, and I defend my actions, because you need to slow people down, it's for the kids, it ain't for me, it's for the kids.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? Councilman?
Um, Mr. President, thank you, Mr. Decort, as you know, we, I, I personally have been trying to assist with this issue for well over a year now, and now we have Councilman Famiglietti. You're right about stop signs, that's more of an enforcement issue, because people, they stop if they want, and sometimes they don't stop. Um, the speed bump or speed bump has come up before, and I'm assuming that Councilman Famiglietti is going to take that up in ordinance. I, I hate to put words in his mouth, but, um, I've spoken to many of your neighbors and a lot of them are in favor of it. There naturally are a few that aren't, because they don't want it near their house. Um, but I think it's something that we're gonna have to really just actually probably hit the pavement and go knock on doors and, and make it happen.
Councilman?
Speed bump, uh, in order to start the process of having a speed bump there, and, and we've been through it, you have to get all the neighbors, have them sign a petition, get it to one of these guys here, they, and the process stops. You have to have, excuse me, you have to have fifty-one percent, uh...
Fifty-one percent.
As a minimum in order for you to get it, but that's a great way to start, when you have a petition, you hand it to these guys here, it goes on from there.
It wouldn't be my first petition in front of you folks, because I've already had one done, uh, with speed bump, years, six years ago. The second one is, is a gentleman came to my house with a petition that was supposed to be brought to you, and I was told that it was never brought up, and it was to my knowledge, when I spoke to him, for a speed bump. So, I didn't, I couldn't make the meeting, I was already, I had plans, but that was what I was told by the gentleman when I signed it, and I asked him to come back and let me know what happened, and nobody ever...
So, Mr. Decort, that was, excuse me, uh, Steve, that was Alan St. Pierre, and I, I am in receipt of that, I do have it. He got it to us, it was too late for the meeting, uh, but we do already have it. It's not the entire street though, so we will have to go back out there and, and hit the whole street, but I feel like it's gonna be pretty easy to get at least fifty-one percent on that street, so...
Well, if you need, I'll still, I'll, my boots are made for walking, and I'll hit the streets again, I'm there.
We'll definitely give you a call.
If, if that's what we need, I'm gonna do it.
As we were talking about before the meeting, you know, nobody over here is a traffic expert, so this is why we bring it to the ordinance committee, and like we talked about earlier tonight, we're all gonna sit down and we're gonna figure out what is the proper solution here. You might be right that the speed bump is the proper solution, and maybe we'll, you know, we'll be able to tackle that part. Today's the first step to get the ball rolling on your area there. Like I said, we're trying to do everything that we can to fix a traffic issue in that area. We're on the right track, we're gonna finish the job with this. Um, I know we might have one more person who wants to speak on it.
Ten years, otherwise sixty-one Garfield. The other issue is, we have, a lot of us now do cut through the whole neighborhood, and there's no speed, there is no speed limit signs other than down the far end of Garfield Street where all the traffic is, where all the people talk to both sides of the street. Lojai has no speed, uh, I've never seen one.
I don't know if Lojai does, I, I don't look for it, but there used to be one across the street from my house on the telephone pole. I think it's pole number eight, because I have to call for the lighting. So, there used to be one, it said twenty miles an hour, but it never did have, I don't believe, the children at play, which it should also have with the speed limit, children at play, that way people can get it in their head, that matters most. But it should have that also, I mean, that would be another thing if we can get that, that would...
Well, we don't, um, just so you know, we don't need an ordinance for that, so I'm glad you brought that to our attention, we can talk to DPW about that.
And I have to tell you, I am opposed to all those like stop signs. They don't do anything, I watched Halloween, I sat on my porch giving out candy, and people drove right through the stop signs. People that lived in the neighborhood, people that don't live in the neighborhood.
She lives directly where the stop signs are.
Where the three stop signs are. I come out of my driveway to stop at the stop sign to go through the next one. It's insane.
Mr. President, I have three motions. First one, I'd, uh, like to refer this matter to the ordinance committee to determine whether the further action we can do.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman Famigetti, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Emery, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it.
Second motion is, given the concerns that speed, uh, I'm sorry, stop signs are not being complied with, we'll, uh, I'd make a motion to send a letter to the police department and require, request D-runs in that area to, um, hopefully catch any offenders.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman Famigetti, is there a second? Second by Councilman Emery, any questions? There be none, all's in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it.
The third motion is to send a letter to the Department of Public Works, asking to put up signs that will post the speed limit on both Garfield and Lojai, as well as signs indicating children at play.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman Famigetti, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Emery, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it, thank you.
One more question. I'm all kidding you guys, so, this next meeting that you're proposing, that how will we find out about this? Because we found out about the one way, just driving up absolutely down the one way, the long way, we're finding out about stop signs going through, because the first night it was up, they were like, my kid goes, Dad, did you see the stop sign? I'm like, where?
Very, very plainly, first, you can look up online, second, I'm the chairman, I'll set the meeting and I'll let you know.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a good one.
Item number fifteen, Providence Water. Councilman Famigetti requests discussion and possible vote regarding Providence Water Company utility work on June Street. Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. President, um, attached to your packet, there are two black and white pictures showing, uh, well, as we know, Providence Water is working in the Merryville area, um, digging up the streets... well, as we know, Providence Water is working in the Merryville area, um, digging up the streets, upgrading of, uh, water systems, which is great. Unfortunately, on, um, uh, June Street, they have decided that will be the, uh, post where they're going to keep all of the cones, the, uh, um, the bases to the, the barrels that they use to mark off the, the different areas. Um, it's right in front of people's houses. Um, there actually is a vacant lot directly behind where those cones are. We've tried to reach out to DPW to ask Providence Water to reach out to their contractor or reach out to the contractor directly to see if those could be moved away from the residential area into where the vacant lot is. There has been no response. And we have a few people here tonight who live on the street. Uh, I don't know if they would like to address the council just to share their concerns.
How you doing? Michael Murphy, I live on June Street. Um, just a little history, they were doing the, uh, water remediation, lead remediation on June Street, replacing hydrants. I know this isn't anything you're responsible for, but it goes to the scope of the issue. Uh, they put in a new hydrant in front of my house. Uh, they said they did not charge the lines. However, in the morning, the gentleman was running the hydrant. I ended up with a inch or two of water in my basement, at which point Providence Water decided it wasn't their fault. They transferred me to Bizco. Bizco said it wasn't their fault, they transferred me back to Providence Water. As I went on with this complaint, a few days later, they stopped putting barrels across the street. And at one point, the barrels reached about eight or nine high. I counted approximately hundred, hundred and ten barrels there, stacks of cones. The next day I came home from work, there are eleven steel plates running down June Street. No holes, no construction, just storing the plates on June Street. Councilman Famiglietti helped us, uh, voice that opinion. They removed the plates, they put them on a trailer at the end of June Street going across Lillian Street. So if you take the corner, or if someone's not paying attention, you're face-to-face with a trailer. All this started because I wanted them to test the hydrant before they sealed it up. Because if they, when we do the hydrant flushing in town, or if they have to use that for a call, I have a very funny feeling I'm gonna end up with a basement full of water again. They never returned my call near the Bizco nor Providence Water. Next thing I know, across the street from my house has become a storage area for the, for the subcontractors. Every morning, they're out there at seven o'clock dropping off barrels, picking up barrels. We've got barrels in the street every time the wind blows. And the neighbors have to get up, go outside, clear the street of the barrels. We're just asking that, maybe the council could encourage them to use one of the vacant lots, not surrounded by houses, to, uh, use their storage. I know in most construction projects, you have a designated storage area for those types of things. But again, that's all I have. I know it's not necessarily your responsibility because it comes through a subcontractor, through Providence Water, but they're not helping us out at all either.
Thank you, Counselor.
Whose, whose property are the barrels on?
Uh, it's actually owned by Narragansett Electric. It's those three lots between, uh, Josephine Street and June Street. And then there's another additional lot on the other side of Josephine Street that's empty as well.
So I suppose Narragansett Electric's not gonna be able to move the barrels?
I doubt it.
Mr. President?
Counselor?
So we've run into this, thank you for coming, Mr. Murphy. Uh, we've run into this problem before, um, on those particular properties between people parking cars that weren't registered on those properties. We've sent letters to National Grid in the past, asking them to take some corrective action. Uh, sometimes they've been responsive, sometimes they haven't.
Right.
Um, I'm open to suggestions, I feel like we're probably gonna have to do the same thing here. Maybe we send a letter both to National Grid and Providence Water and Bizco for that matter. I mean, that, that could be one approach. Uh, you know, attack all of them because it is private property. We can't, you know, if they got permission from National Grid, we can't make them do anything. But maybe we can get National Grid to be a good neighbor.
That's all I'm looking for, is kinda keep the neighborhood looking nice and a little bit safer at night, rather than dodging barrels as you go down to the street.
It's crazy, yeah.
Okay, you wanna make a motion?
Thank you.
I'll make a motion that we send three letters out, one to, uh, Providence Water and one to Bizco, asking them to move the barrels, uh, the steel plates and everything else they're using to work on in that area away from the residential area into another lot that is not abutting the residential areas. Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman Famiglietti, second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Amorigi, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it? A second would be a, uh, letter to National Grid asking, um, if they could, uh, take appropriate actions to their lot to make sure that it's not being used in that manner. Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman Famiglietti, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Amorigi, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it? There, do you wanna make a third motion?
I think that was.
What was the company name?
Bizco.
B I S?
B I Z.
B I Z.
B I S.
B I S C O?
Okay. Does, Mr. President, does it also make sense to ask, ask the mayor to reach out to someone from Providence Water? Because I, I assume we have a relatively decent relationship with Providence Water, where one of their larger users, I'm assuming. Um, and if we already have a relationship there, it may be helpful to go through that person as opposed to just sending a letter, kind of a, a general letter to someone.
That's a good idea.
Uh, if we have a personal relationship with someone, could we ask the mayor to reach out?
Okay, a motion's been made to send a letter to the mayor to reach out to Providence Water by Councilman Matone, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Famiglietti, any questions? Have you any others in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it? Item number sixteen, Pizza Hut deliveries. Councilman Famiglietti requests discussion and possible vote on delivery times for Pizza Hut at fifteen sixty-five Mineral Spring Avenue. Counselor? Thank you. Uh, contrary to, uh, popular belief, we're not looking at the Pizza Hut deliveries of delivering the pizza, but sort of the deliveries to Pizza Hut. So, um, where Pizza Hut is, it's on Mineral Spring Avenue. Directly behind it is a residential area. Unfortunately, Pizza Hut has been having their deliveries with their eighteen-wheelers come three, four o'clock in the morning. Truck comes, releases its hydraulics, wakes up the neighborhood, drops its ramp, wakes up the neighborhood. Um, so we have been trying to talk to Pizza Hut to see if maybe they could change the delivery hours. Nothing's changed as of yet. Um, we do have residents here who would like to address the council.
Good evening, Everett LaMonton, I am the owner and resident of one twenty-two Duchess Avenue, which is in the back. Um, Pizza Hut opened almost eleven months ago, first week of December last year. And I remember on a Friday night, sitting down with my wife, watching TV, it's ten o'clock, and the first tractor-trailer pulled in. And we were like, whoa, ten o'clock at night on a Friday. Um, pretty much let it go until April, until we started getting one eighteen in the morning deliveries. Um, and then I kinda went to the store manager. And she said, McLean Trucking is actually contracted for Pizza Hut, they do Taco Bell. It's a, it's a, it's a company that does it for the corporations. And, um, she said that we were having the same problem because she actually remembered the Friday night delivery because her people had to, they were still doing, they were still working, they were still open at the time, and they were still getting a delivery, so it was kind of like a total mess. So she recalled it, uh, the very first delivery. Um, I've actually gone outside at three, four in the morning on a, on a Saturday, early Saturday morning, um, and spoke to the, the driver. Um, what happens is these, the driver is by himself, he puts a set of headphones on and is totally oblivious to what's going on in the truck, the pallets. Boom, they're inside the truck, straightening out their truck. It's, um, when they first pull in, they're trying to angle the door to get to the back door, so it's trial and error. Psh, guy gets out of the truck. Beep, beep, beep. You got the idea. And sometimes it's two, three, four times. Um, it's just, I've talked to, like I said, the driver. I've asked them, please, you're in a residential area, my house is literally right there. Um, so sorry, we'll do the best we can, so on and so forth. Fast forward, nine months later, I spoke to, uh, Councilman Famiglietti. He said, what can we do? I mean, I've been, since I've talked to him, I've been writing down the, the times. The last two or three, uh, which was actually Saturday night, and Wednesday, early Wednesday morning, or Saturday morning and Sun, uh, Wednesday morning. Saturday was three twenty AM, and then, um, Wednesday morning was three eighteen. They're there approximately forty-five minutes, thirty, forty-five minutes. Hit and run, two deliveries a week. It, it, it kinda drives me crazy. The Patriot disposal has been a little bit better. It's pretty sad, I can tell you exactly what time they get their trash picked up. And then, that's Monday and Friday, then it goes to the Dunkin' Donuts and he picks up their trash, and then it goes across to the family, the medical center. Sounds kinda crazy, but once, once you get kinda woken up, you're kinda, you're, you're there. Um, but like I said, um, I've been marking down all these times since, uh, August fifteenth. Uh, the two deliveries a week, like I said, the disposal has been a lot better. They're, they're usually a little quicker, and they come a little bit later, and they're kinda varied. So, but right now, it's just basically the Pizza Hut delivery at that time of the morning. I'm just looking for.
I thought so too.
Something reasonable. I mean, seven o'clock is fine, I, I get it, you know? At first, they were doing Sunday mornings and Thursday mornings. Now it's Saturday mornings and Wednesday mornings. So they've changed it that way. Um, but I guess that's just how they, how we fall on, on their delivery schedule. And, um, after speaking with the manager at the time, she said she, um, told McLean and kinda, I mean, I don't know if it fell on deaf ears or what. So.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Is there, is there someone from the store there on the delivery?
No, no. Yeah, so they, what they're going, they're grabbing the fire key in the front of the store, letting themselves in, go through the store, and they, the, the back door is where the back parking lot is. I mean, that's, I think that's, personally, that's the problem because it's got a rear lot, and that's where all the, everything gets taken in. Um, I'm hopefully, when Mr. Greco develops that rest of that property, we can kind of, hopefully, he comes up with a plan and it kind of eliminates that. Um, but right now, that's, that, that back door, that, that's where their walk-in freezer is. And that's, everything that they sell is frozen, so.
And when the deliveries were on Sundays and Thursdays, were they still in the middle of the night?
Yes, yeah, yeah, absolutely. They vary, uh, on times, but basically anywhere between two and four thirty, five o'clock in the morning. Like I said, I told Mr. Famiglietti, I said, you know, I mean, if it was twenty-five years ago, if there was a delivery at two thirty, I wouldn't have had a problem on a Saturday night because I wouldn't have been home. But now that I'm fifty, with, with a couple of kids and a wife, it's a different story. I would've been probably at Betty's by then. Nothing, nothing's made, Mr. Juicy. I'm being honest with you, everything's frozen, all, all that, that pizza dough, it all comes in frozen.
I have two motions, we did invite someone from, uh, we did invite Pizza Hut to come, I don't know if anybody's here. Is anyone here from Pizza Hut? No. Okay, uh, I do have two motions. First, I'd like to refer this matter to the ordinance committee to see if there's anything that we could do. Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman Famiglietti, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Bacala, any questions? Have you any others in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it, second motion? Second motion is to send a communication to, uh, the mayor and Mike Connavalli to see if we can, uh, look at any possible action that can be taken if there are any ordinances on the books that can be enforced to, uh, help the situation. Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman Famiglietti, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Amorigi, any questions? Have you any others in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it? Thank you.
Can I, can I add one more? Can we send a communication to Pizza, uh, requiring their appearance at the next council meeting?
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman Matone, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Juicy, any questions? Have you any others in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it? Thank you.
Thank you very much, have a nice night.
Okay, item number seventeen, traffic issues. Councilman Famiglietti requests discussion and possible vote on traffic issues on Mock Drive. Counselor? It's my last one. This relates to an ordinance that was passed earlier in the night, uh, traffic issues on Orlando Drive. Um, my motion that I'll make tonight is to refer this to the ordinance committee to see if there's any action to be taken in that area. Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman Famiglietti, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Amorigi, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it? Item number nineteen, eighteen, informational mailings. Councilman Amorigi requests discussion and possible vote regarding informational mailings. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I've been on the council now for three years, and, and I first brought this up a couple of years ago when we were debating, um, the town obtaining the trash bins. And, um, I had made a, a suggestion, or at least a request, that, um, some information be sent out with the tax bills about proper, uh, use of the recycling and trash bins. Um, since then, and, and somebody's here tonight, Ms. Maderos, um, there has been some constituents that have reached out to us and voiced some concern about, um, notice being given when, um, you know, there's direct effects on their neighborhood. We're taking action. Uh, clearly, they can get the, the dates of the meetings online, uh, both on the town website and the Secretary of State, and a lot of the things that we do are advertised in the breeze. That said, uh, I, I would like to maybe take an opportunity to look at this issue again and see what the cost would be of us sending, uh, maybe some limited, uh, limited mailings out when we're taking, um, legislative action, if you will, that directly affects, um, certain neighborhoods. Uh, also, um, in, as part of that inquiry, also looking at again, maybe piggybacking off of the tax bills, some informational mailings that will help actually save the town money, such as how to properly recycle. Um, so my inclination was to make a motion to refer this to the Finance Committee to investigate the costs of informational mailings, uh, both standalone ones and as well as ones that will be, um, packaged with the tax bills.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman Amorigi, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Famiglietti, any questions? Have you any others in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it? Item number nineteen, handicap signs. Councilman Amorigi requests discussion and possible vote on designated handicap parking at nine sixty-six Mineral Spring Avenue. Counselor?
Thank you, Mr. President. So nine sixty-six Mineral Spring Avenue is, uh, fail-on primary care. And, um, I, it was brought to my attention that a, a vast majority of their, um, patients are now dropped off by, um, buses. Uh, a lot of them are now elderly, they can't get around, so they're provided transportation by the state. However, people park right in front of fail-on primary care, and so a lot of the times, these, uh, transport vehicles are not able to drop off , uh, the elderly or handicapped in front of the practice. And in fact, people are missing their appointments because of it. So I'm gonna make a motion, uh, that we send a letter to the Department of Transportation requesting that they, um, install handicap parking signs at nine sixty-six Mineral Spring Avenue.
Okay, a motion's been made by Councilman Amorigi, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Juicy, any questions? Have you any others in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it? Item number twenty, resignation letters. Receive letters of resignation to be accepted with regret from the following. Sammy Marcos, minority member of Library Board of Trustees, minority member of Environmental Commission. Alex Lager, mayoral appointment of Environmental Commission. Stephen Burrowick, resignation from Planning Board, mayoral appointment in North Providence Land Trust. Do I have a motion to accept these letters of resignation with regret?
So.
Motion been made by Councilman Famiglietti, seconded by Councilman Juicy, any questions? Have you any others in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it? Item number twenty-one, board appointments. Town council discussion and possible vote with regard to the appointments to be made to the following boards
with regard to the, appointments to be made to the following boards, due to the resignation of members in the previous agenda item, Board of Trustees, Public Libraries, do you have a, the?
I don't have any, any people, any, any candidates.
Okay, Planning Board?
These are, most of these are the ones that just resigned.
Okay, Planning Board, two appointments to Environmental Commission, one mayoral appointment, one minority appointment, and alternate, alternate to the North Providence Land Trust, council appointment, do I make a motion to continue these to the next month's meeting?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman Di Lorenzo, seconded by Councilman Juicy, any questions, have you any, none of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number twenty-two, claims submitted, Town Council discussion and possible vote with regard to the claims received from the following, James Yule, fifty Laurel Drive, North Providence, Rhode Island, zero two nine zero four, Coman Zuleta, one twenty-three Anderton, Anderton Avenue, North Providence, Rhode Island, zero two nine zero four, do I have a motion to refer these to the Claims Committee? Motion's been made by Councilman Di Lorenzo, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Matone, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number twenty-three, Claims Committee report, Town Council discussion and possible vote with regard to the Claims Committee report, to be presented by Councilman Juicy, Councilman?
We had, uh, four claims, the first one was from a Justin DeRoses, we awarded him four hundred dollars, the second one was for Robert Giuliano, we awarded him two hundred and thirty-three dollars and twenty-six cents, the third one was from Comma Zuleta, uh, we're gonna send that to the town solicitor, to check if the contractor can make payment of this bill, and the last one was James Yule, and we're doing the same thing with this one, we're sending it to the town solicitor, to check with the contractor on payment of this bill also.
Can you just tell me those amounts again, Justin?
For which one?
The, the, the one, the only two you paid, Justin?
Uh, well, Justin was four hundred dollars.
Okay.
And Robert Giuliano, two thirty-three, twenty-six.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to accept the Claims Committee report?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilman Famagetti, is there a second? Seconded by Councilman Di Lorenzo, any questions, have you any, none of those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number twenty-four, Ordinance Committee report, com, Town, uh, Town Council discussion and action with regard to the Ordinance Committee report, to be presented by Councilman Famagetti, Councilman?
Thank you, Mr. President, the ordinance committee met October twenty-third, we had eight items on the agenda, a, a number of which have come out, and are on the agenda for ordinance introduction, um, given that we will address those directly after this, I will, uh, I'd make a motion that we accept the ordinance committee, uh, report.
Motion's been made by Councilman Famagetti, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bacala, any questions, have you any, none of those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number twenty-five, Ordinance Introduction, discussing, discussion and possible vote to introduce ordinance number nineteen dash zero one five, repealing ordinance eighteen dash zero one four, and ordinance nineteen dash zero zero nine of the North Providence Code of Ordinances, as they relate to one-way traffic on Franklin Street, do I have a motion to introduce?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman Famagetti, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Amorigi, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number twenty-six, Ordinance Introduction, discussion and possible vote to introduce ordinance number nineteen dash zero one six, amending chapter four of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of North Providence, to add section four dash twenty-eight, entitled Breeding Licenses, do I have a motion to introduce?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman Juicy, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Bacala, any questions, have you any, none of those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number twenty-seven, Ordinance Introduction, discussion and possible vote to introduce ordinance number nineteen dash zero one seven, amending chapter nineteen, article ten, section nineteen dash thirty of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of North Providence, entitled No Parking on Certain Streets Generally, to provide for certain parking restrictions on Third Street in the Town of North Providence, do I have a motion to introduce?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman Amorigi, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Juicy, any questions, have you any, none of those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number twenty-eight, Ordinance Introduction, discussion and possible vote to introduce ordinance number nineteen dash zero one eight, amending chapter nineteen, article ten, section nineteen dash forty-seven, be of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of North Providence, entitled Two-Way Stop Signs, to provide for a stop sign on Tiffany Street at the intersection of Friendship Street, do I have a motion to introduce ordinance number nineteen dash zero one eight? Motion's been made by Councilman Juicy, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Famagetti, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number twenty-nine, Ordinance Introduction, discussion and possible votes to introduce ordinance number nineteen dash zero one nine, amending chapter nineteen, article seven, section nineteen dash thirty of the Code of Ordinances of the Town of North Providence, entitled No Parking on Certain Streets Generally, to provide for certain parking restrictions on Dorman Avenue in the Town of North Providence, do I have a motion to introduce?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman Bacala, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Juicy, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed, the ayes have it. Item number thirty, Tax Abatements Under a Thousand Dollars, Town Council Discussion and Action, and possible vote for approval of the list of tax abatements under a thousand received from the tax assessment, the amount of one thousand seven hundred and seventy-three dollars and ninety-five cents for real estate, and a hundred and three dollars and twenty-nine cents for tangibles, do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion's been made by Councilman Juicy, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilman Matone, any questions, Councilman?
Normally, do these last two, number thirty and thirty-one, go into the Finance Department?
Only the over a thousand.
Over, yeah.